2007.
PTNT says six o'clock. All right, let's get this thing rolling. Please. All right, we'll call the meeting to order at six o'clock. Can I get a roll call, please?
Yes, sir. Mayor James Hobbs, Mayor Proten, Rodney Guthrie.
Here.
Greg Richards.
Here.
Frank Jackson.
Here.
Paul Cochran.
Here.
And David Farmer.
Here.
We have a forum.
Okay, next we'll have the pledge allegiance. Pledge to the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Texas flag.
I pledge allegiance to the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America. One state, under God, one indivisible.
Great big send you attention.
Lord, we thank you for this day, well, thank you, Lord, for the privilege of having this meeting tonight. We just ask you to bless each one here. For those that couldn't be here for whatever it is. Ask you to be for those in our city that have lost loved ones, those that are sick, those that are in the hospital. Just be with them and comfort them as long as you can. Ask you to forgive us for the time we spent against you, for we ask you all in Christ and our name.
Item number two, citizens' comments. Any citizens' comments?
Karen Mathel.
Ms. Karen.
Good evening.
Hello.
I'm gonna say something first. We have Relay for Life, May 30th, in Waukesha Hatchee, and I would appreciate if all of you would attend. I know Frank has supported that for a lot of years, 'cause of family members, so if you'd like to do a donation, I'll take it.
May.
The other thing, May 30th, I'm sorry, at Waukesha Hatchee Sports Complex. The other thing, I'm really disturbed about some of the city's spending. When I've been able to get the financials, I'm seeing things that disturb me a lot. I really don't think that y'all are being careful with citizen money. I don't think we're being good stewards at all. Growing up, and I'm not doing this to be funny, I'm doing it to make a point. Growing up, I heard over and over, "When hell freezes over." Or, "It'll be a cold day in hell when something happens." And I think, or I thought it would be a cold day in hell when citizens are expected to pay for things that we're having to pay for, and it's frivolous spending. So I think it's been real cold here, and it must be hell, and I'm being serious. We're buying flowers for Boss's Day, flowers for somebody in the hospital. I've worked in offices, I'm 64-years-old. From the time I got out of the Air Force and went into an office, we always took up collections for Boss's Day. I know the county does that now at precinct three. They don't expect the citizens of the county to pay for this. We don't pay for their lunches. If they're working on the road, and they've got a tree down, their lunch is with them. We don't pay for it. I'm seeing flowers and cakes, and I did offer to make cakes. I hope y'all remember that, to save the citizens' money. I said I'd make any cake that y'all needed. No one has called me one time, and y'all just keep spending and spending and spending. I'm asking y'all, all of you, as a citizen, to please be better stewards. Stop all of this junk spending, 'cause that's what it is. If the citizens, or if the guys in public works want to get Dean something, they need to take up a collection. If the girls in City Hall want to get something for Terry, they need to fork the money over. Did my name go on the flowers that, on the card with the flowers that were sent to Mayor Hobbs when he was in the hospital? Or did it say from the citizens of Italy? I bet not. I bet it said from the employees, and that's not true. It was my money. I want y'all to stop what you're doing, think about it, and be more conscientious. I would not expect you to get into my bank account and go blowing money. I don't want you to get into my bank account that belongs to the city and blow the money either. So y'all, I'm just asking, as nicely as I can, to please do a better job. That's why you were elected. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hobbs.
Jimmy Howes.
Counsel, I don't want to stand up. I've had quite concerns for some time watching y'all do a consent agenda, where you just okay the bills. Our job, for years and years, as a councilperson, was to examine those bills, see where they went, see who got them, see who signed for them. Y'all are not doing that. You're not been stewards. That is your job. That's what we're naked you for, was to look out for our money. You have a city attorney here, and he will probably give you a ruling that no tax dollars, period, can be spent without the enjoyment of every citizen in Italy. It cannot be spent for an employee in any form or fashion. Any employee that's worked for the city of Italy, or for any city, knows that. They can't give you an excuse, "Well, I didn't know that." That's the rules. The Dallas Fire Department, the Waukesha Police Department, they will not allow you to spend tax dollars. We could not even buy bottled water for our fire department. We had to take a jug, put water in it, wash it out, put it in an icebox, and freeze it, and put it in our water coolers. We got nothing of tax dollars. That has to stop, tonight, period. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jimmy.
That's all.
All right, we'll go to the called meeting. A, discuss some necessary actions on previous paid bills and current unpaid bills. Mr. Farmer.
Yeah, I put this on, and this is probably gonna help Mr. Howes and Ms. Mathel. I kinda wanted to discuss this, because last meeting, I ran across some things that just didn't look right. So recently, I pulled all the bills from 2011 through 2015, and went line item by line item. Several hours looking over this, and I kinda wanted to bring this up to the council's attention, to kinda see what we can do to stop, to stop it. I mean, because once I started deep diving into it, I mean, it even blew my mind, guys. So I'm gonna start off with the water department, just because I caught some things last meeting. So in 2011 to 2015, and I have it broken down for last year as well. In lunches alone, just for employees, for working water leaks, we spent $1,400 just in lunches. Drinks, whether it be Gatorade, coffee, water, or sodas, we spent $1,470. Miscellaneous items was $307.23. I bring this up, because there's no description in the bill detail. It just says miscellaneous. Have no idea what it's for, what items was purchased or anything. And then I have the no receipt for $697.86. This goes from where it's miscellaneous items to lunches in Waukesha Hatchee at Cotton Patch, where it has no receipts attached to them. Per our policy, it states that we have to have documentation to get reimbursed for items with, that's purchased on a corporate card, or purchased, you know, with cash, and we have to get reimbursed back. And there's a lot of no receipts in our expenses. So right now, from 2014 to 2015, we're sitting at $809 for Gatorade, lunches, and coffee. Like Mr. Howes said, guys, I mean, this is something, and again, I know $809 might not, it might not seem too much, but over the time, this is things that we could use to buy printer paper, or bulletproof vests, or rain jackets, or anything that we actually need that we would use for budget, this could help out, and we'll go toward that. So I'm gonna go to the police. The police department in 2011 to 2015, for food, spent $240.44. From 2014 to year-to-date now, we're at $24.98, and that was a cake that was ordered for Dyeran Hill, previous to the new chief getting in place. So it looks like the police department is, you know, even prior with Dyeran being, being on, I mean, it looked like he was managing his budget pretty good. And I hope that Sean can kinda take that and move forward with that. Going to the general fund, 2000 to 2015, I came up with a total of $6,585 that has been spent on these certain items. We have employee employment, or employee development, which is $492.54. The chief CV's retirement, we spent $645 on the chief's retirement. $172 was for a cake. $175 was for his gift at the Smokehouse. Gift cards, we spent $1,472 just in gift cards. And I do know where some of those went, and it looked like a lot of it's like the Christmas, you know, the luncheon for the Christmas for the employees, and things like that. Flowers, cake, and meals, we've spent $3,974 just on flowers, cakes, and meals. And now, I didn't take into account of the flowers that we use to beautify the town. This is just flowers that go to people, like, we sent some to Joyce Hobbs, we sent some to Mayor Hobbs, we sent some to the Jackson family, we've sent some to the Hyde, or Hate family, I mean, just different things like that. I'm not saying I'm opposed to things like that, however, I think it needs to be brought up in front of council for the citizens to hear and, and get some feedback. I mean, 'cause this is, I mean, we're all here, I mean, we're all citizens, this is all of our money. And what brought this up is, I was talking to some officers, and I was talking to the chief, and we were just talking about budget items, and then I was able to talk to other cities, and I was like, "Yeah, guys were broke, and I have no idea why." And this is part of the problem. And I, I think, and again, the total right now, we're sitting at $10,333 for all that. And this is just, I haven't even deep dove into it. This is just like off-the-top food, lunches, you know, drinks, and flowers. If I go in deeper, I'm, I'm probably looking upward at $20,000 easily. This could be a road thing, you know? And I, I just wanna bring this up again to the council, because I think this does have to stop. I think it's out of hand. I, I think, and it's hard, because everybody only has a boss once a month. Because we're, we're, we're nothing unless we're up here once a month. I don't have a boss once a month. I have a boss every day. And when nobody has accountability, this is, this is where it's gonna fall. Right here, this is what's gonna happen. So again, I wanted to bring it up, and, you know, I'm hoping that us, as a council, can make a good decision tonight, and put something in place that we can control this. Thanks, guys.
Good night.
Sure.
Can your city attorney address that?
Yeah, do you have an opinion?
Well, I have not been able, I've not been provided anything to look at, so I'll start off with that probably, because...
That shouldn't take anything to look at, knowing the law.
I'll get the Mr. Howes up there just. But, having said that, my concern is that if these are not funds spent on city business, then that is a problem.
Thank you. And, and by looking at all these expenses, and all, just so you know, like, everybody knows, I mean, it's line item by line item under, it's under, I've got this one, water expense, miscellaneous expense, I've got general funds, miscellaneous expense. I found all this under that. And it's broken down. All the black marks are the items that are not used for city business. And again, I mean, it's hundreds of items that I went through, line by line. I did leave some out, because I did have questions about it, where it just, I didn't think that it could probably fall under that, so I just went ahead and left that out. That way, I wasn't, you know, saying something that wasn't true. So I took the items that were detailed enough that says, "Flowers for Hobbs," or "Mayor Hobbs," or "Cake for Mayor Hobbs," and I'm using him just for an example. So I made sure I looked at every single item, and it was detailed, to that, that nature. Or, "We had a luncheon," or "Lunch for city workers, because we had a water leak." We shouldn't be paying for lunches. We should be reaching out out of our back pocket, saying, "Hey, can somebody run and go get us lunch? Here's my money for lunch." We don't do that. I mean, I've never seen a company that does that. And especially a municipality. Shouldn't do it. That's an issue.
Mr. Boss, could he repeat that last statement? I heard part of it. If there are, if these are not spent on city business, then I lost the rest. If he could repeat that.
Then it's a problem.
Okay, thank you.
But, but that's it for me, guys. I just wanted to, again, bring it up, and I, I think we need to put something in place, and we need to address it tonight.
And this is specifically why we voted not to approve that.
Speak out, please.
I said, "This is..." This is why we voted last council meeting not to approve this, this budget, because of the concerns that we had on each, each of the items. I do wanna state that these are nudists. Our normal ledger would have been a couple of sheets, you know, maybe, "Police department spent this, and spent that." And so it was, it was not detailed, and, and no one, no one had all this. And I know it takes a lot of work to put this together, so, but I appreciate that, and, and I appreciate the citizens that, that are, we need, this is, this is y'all's money, and, and it is important. So getting the, being able to get down to it, and be able to dig into it, is, thanks for providing this to us and to the citizens, so we can bring this to life, to say, you know, "What are we doing here?" And now we can see where our money's going.
You know, I know, you said, "Those flowers for Jackson's family," I think I lost about four or five brothers and sisters. And that was, they were, you know, it was, I thank the city for, for sending flowers. But if it does a problem, you know, we'll pay it. I make sure that my family pays them for those flowers and stuff. If they're just adding up how much it was, and we'll pay them, pay them for the flowers and stuff.
Yeah, and again, Frank, I was just using you as an example.
I know, I know, like I said, you know, if it's, if that's, if that's, that's gonna be a problem, you know? My, my family, we gladly go and pay the flowers, for the flowers and stuff like that. You know, I come from a large family, and, you know, I was around four in one year, so I understand, no problem.
You know, and again, I wanna say something to the citizens, and this is for the employees. I don't mind doing things to incentivize, you know, incentivize the employees, and say, "Hey, good job." But at the point that we're at right now, like, I mean, I mean, we're so far, I mean, right now, we're not over budget, but by the, the end of the year, it's gonna be bad news. And until we get to that point, we can't even think about buying gift cards, or we can't think about buying flowers, or, unless it's for the city. And then, even then, we have to make sure we're within the law. I mean, we're, we're, we have to follow the law, and we need to be held accountable for that.
That's right. Here's the, let me, let me state, because we, here's the penal code, and it specifically states, you know, if you've, what it is per item, as far as if you, if it's less than $20 misdemeanor, it goes on down the list. And I, I hold this council liable for the money that's spent. We should be liable to you guys for each dollar that's spent. I was reading an article in Minnesota, and they indicted some people, and the council, for, for this very reason. It was, it was, you know, the money was spent, they knew about it, they approved it, it went on, and, and, and now they're dealing with legal troubles up there, because of this. So, and the only thing we can do right now is, and I know, I appreciate you saying that about the thing, but we need to stop it and, and move forward. 'Cause I don't think we're gonna be able to recoup any of those past funds, you know, and I appreciate that.
Well, I mean, for, for my, I can't, I can't speak for nobody, but, but my family.
Sure, sure. But to go back and try to, I mean, who are you gonna get, like, say, Hobbs, and Hobbs can say, "I'm not gonna pay that money back."
Well, I mean, I know, I'm just speaking for myself.
I know, I know.
You know, I can't pick.
But, but to go back and, you know, like I said, we, we need to move forward and, and hold everyone accountable for, for this, because we're liable.
I agree with that, you know, it's mine.
You know, my, my final, my final thought, though, we, we've been up here and talked about expenses and accountability, I don't know how many times, since I've been elected. And yes, we do need to stop, but it's time to hold people accountable. I mean, we can't keep doing this. We can't move forward until we start holding people accountable, plain and simple. And right now, we're not holding anybody accountable. So I'm sure the bills are gonna get approved, and we're gonna move forward. We have to hold people accountable for every single thing that is spent in our city. Until then, we're gonna be in the same position that we are, year after year, day after day.
I was just gonna ask, Mr. Boss, is, is that a problem, or is that illegal? Your, your comment was it's gonna be a problem. Is it a problem, or is it illegal?
It can be illegal. I don't know the details, other than what I've heard tonight from y'all, so I'd have to look at it. The penal code provision he's looking at is 3902 of the penal code. And so that is a charge, or it's a, it's a law that has to be specific to a particular employee abusing it. And so that's a general statement, because that's all I know right now. But yes, it can be.
I think we're good. So, y'all wanna go ahead and approve the bills?
Yeah, I guess we can go ahead and...
So we can get, go ahead and get those paid?
Yeah. Yes, I mean, yeah.
Well, I mean, I, there's some issues, I mean, on this bill. I mean, there's still lunches on this bill that I don't, I'm not gonna approve. That's whatever it went, but...
And I recommend a motion, be specific on what you want approved and what you don't want approved.
Okay.
Can I say something, Mayor Proten?
Sure.
I think if, you know, if we have, already got the service for these people, like, you know, like Vaughners, and Nanso, and Davis, and stuff, we already got the service, we should pay these, we should pay these people. That's the way I feel, that's the way I feel, but, I mean, Rodney Howes, O.K. Lumber, all those people, we have got the service from them, they should be paid.
It's illegal to pay for lunches, Frankie.
I'm not, I'm not saying for lunches, I said, I didn't say one word, I said, "For services."
Yeah, no, and that's where he said, "I can make a specific motion." If I make a specific motion of what to approve and not to approve, then we can, we can do that, so... So I'll make the motion that we approve all bills excluding water, Gatorade, coffee, lunches, sugar, and that's it.
Yeah. Yeah, any, any personal...
Any personal use items.
Personal use items, yeah. Lunches, anything besides, you know, toilet paper and...
Water, Gatorade, any water, any Gatorade, any lunches.
Any coffee.
Any coffee.
Sugar.
Cream.
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 I'll second.
They put flowers in everything, yes, and then if there's...
Yeah, it's personal, yeah.
I'm looking, is there any...
Well, it kinda encompasses it, when you say, if, if it doesn't directly benefit the city, or all of the citizens, like you say, then it's for personal. If, if they go, we go down there, and it's hot, and we're working on something, and they say, "Well, we're gonna go buy some Gatorade for you guys."
And, and Councilman Jackson, what did you say about that?
I said, "Do what's on paper, this is us, you know, we already got..." "We already have it." I mean, we can't go and say, "Untie David, we're not gonna pay for the sugar." We can't take it back.
You know, I think evidently this has been going on for some time. I believe that the police department, the department buys the coffee and the, and the creamers and stuff for us, so, although I don't drink it, but regardless, but, they bought bottled water for that, and then they had stopped that part of it. But I think at this point, what, it is what it is, it's been bought. I believe it needs to be paid for, and then we put a moratorium that evidently up until this last council meeting and tonight, they have not been told that they can't buy coffee and cream for their office. I don't believe, I, I've never told them that they could. So, whether it's right, wrong, or indifferent, it's already done. I feel that we need to go ahead and pay these people that give us their merchandise, and then, at this point on, we make a moratorium to the employees that these items will not be purchased anymore. I mean, that's, that's just, I think that's just a sensible thing to do at this point. I mean, I, I don't think that whatever's on this budget's gonna break the bank for, for this month.
I don't think so either, but it's, it's...
And I, I understand. But up until this point, these department heads have not been told, "You cannot do this."
That's not something that had to be told.
You know, I mean, other cities do the same thing, as you, as what I'm trying to say.
Y'all do it in Waukesha Hatchee?
Believe so, yeah.
Well, we're not, we're not watching Hatchee. I mean, we're...
I'll find, I'll find out for sure.
I bet you they take a kitty up, just like the school does. Everybody kicks in so much to buy the coffee and the, and the sugar and the...
We'll find out in the morning, but regardless, I think what is done has been done. But if you wanna make that motion, that, let's go ahead and do what we gotta do.
Yeah, when you were on the council, you bought Gatorade.
Yeah, I'm gonna go ahead and continue.
I don't remember the motion.
Well, we have a motion, in a second. Okay, I've got a...
Big thing, and they...
Okay, hang on just a second. I've got a motion to pay the bills except for the water, Gatorade, lunches, coffee, sugar, and cream. And I've got a second by Mr. Cochran, a first by Mr. Farmer. We, any more discussion? Okay, all in favor? All opposed? It's, it's carried to pay the bills as-is.
You need to have a motion.
I'm sorry?
That was a motion to pay...
Oh, it failed, I'm sorry.
It failed.
Okay.
So there needs to be another motion, if you wanna do anything about the bills.
Okay, I wanna go ahead and make the motion to pay the bills as-is.
I step in a motion.
I got a first by me, a second by Mr. Jackson, all in favor? And then all opposed? Okay, it's carried, pay the bills. And then we need to get together and have a workshop, and figure out what we're gonna do and not do, as far as this goes. But I think at this point, there's been a moratorium from this day on, as far as the purchase of these type, these type items.
We, we have a policy, I mean, so, I mean, it's already there.
We'll, we'll move forward, and that'd be happening anymore. All right, B, discussing some necessary actions regarding the quote for the cargo goman sign for the prevailing. Ms. Murdock?
Yes, I did get in touch with Cargo Goman, I mean, I'm sorry, with Quickway Signs, and to do a, the plastic lettering, 360 thick, it's $486, plus 200 to install, for a subtotal of $686. And if we do the aluminum letters that are a quarter-inch thick, that's $1,200, and to install is $300, making that subtotal $1,500. I know that the council approved a maximum of 500. However, the signs, the letters themselves did come under the 500 amount, but the install of the lettering did not.
I'll make a motion that we purchase the plastic signs for the... I'll make a motion that, uh, we, um, purchased the plastic, um, signs for the cargo goman prevailing, for six hundred and eighty-six dollars.
I set up a motion.
I got a first by Mr. Cochran and a second by Mr. Jackson, any discussion?
Yeah, I wanna, so the plastic letters, I mean, we're, again, I, I, I know this is about money, but, uh. Couldn't we wait until we got some money that we could actually purchase, this is kinda like slapping a Band-Aid on, you know, if, if we wanted to look nice and last long. I don't think we should go with plastic letters.
If I'm not mistaken, that First Aid Bank across there, they're, they're, they're just plastic.
No, they're metal.
It's not?
They're metal.
Oh, okay.
That's the ones I, when I told you about, that, like, say, a Quickway, they're, they're metal.
I'm sorry.
And I think that would be, you know, seventy-five thousand dollars per billion.
Are they plastic or fiberglass?
They're metal.
They're, they're metal?
I think it'd be better going, you know, I take a lot of pride in that, I had a lot of time in it, I think plastic, you know, the hot, the cold, it's like, the color's gonna change, I can say it's not, you know that it, that it is, uh. You know, you're gonna do it, do it right, and if y'all have the money to do it right, let's wait.
Yeah, and that, that's my point, you know, I just, I'm tired of slapping Band-Aids on things, and then, in a few years, we're gonna have to go through it again.
We have a motion.
We have a motion in a second, so if the movement is wanting to still go forward with that, then, uh, then go ahead and have a vote on it.
I'll rescind.
Okay. Second, we send it to.
I'll, I'll rescind if they, if, if, if the council promises that we won't forget this, and, and we've been putting it off for almost two years now, be two years and may, and we, we, we will go ahead and do it.
We've been broke longer than that.
So what?
We've been broke longer than that.
We haven't been broke longer than that.
I'm not gonna please the comments at this point, thank you.
I'm like, most of our title is, until we can get a little more money together to do a good job.
No, no, thank you.
Yeah, you can, we can postpone it.
Yeah, postpone or take no action? You, is that, you have a motion to take no action at this time, good. We got a first to take no action by Mr. Richards.
I'll second.
And a second by Mr. Farmer, all in, all in favor? Okay. Adam C. discussing considering necessary actions concerning a controlled burn of fire department of a small house on South Ward Street with the approval from the fire district. In conjunction with obtaining a burn permit from the state, Mr. Farmer?
I'm gonna let, uh, Charles talk about this, I put it on the agenda for him.
Thank you. Uh, you're all aware of the, the, the small house that the department is first owns, uh, the R.A. house. This, uh, since, uh, season has since using it, we're looking at putting a, uh, family life center, a, a large structure that's gonna have a, a multi-purpose area of gymnasium, which one's called a classroom, and some other things. We've, as you know, money's extremely tight, and the cost to tear, we tried to get the house away, and we've had tons of people want it, but when it comes to moving it, they can't foot the bill. So, we've, it's for cost to tear it down and leave it, and then we haul it off, and cost to tear it down, and they haul it off. Either way, uh, I can save a lot more money for the church, and I can turn around and give the fire department access to going in and, and do things we do in Dallas, when apartments go vacant. We go in, we'll cut holes in roofs, we'll, we'll, we'll train guys, we'll pull ceiling, uh, Red Oak just recently did a control burn where they actually would set hay and stuff on fire, minimal stuff, but it gets a little bit of smoke. Let the guys go in, practice pulling the lines, put the fire out and stuff, uh, spoken with Donald Chambers about it, uh, he's trying to check in on the insurance, but this is the first step of, we have, uh. We can't burn a city, but if I can get a, uh, a waiver for this when we get this approved, uh, the closest structures, uh, one's across the street, and the other one is the Methodist, which is, I was gonna have your exact feet from it, but, uh, I'll get that done today. So, but it's, it's not close enough, it's gonna do any, any damage, uh, so what I'm asking this, the council to do is if I can get all the, the ducks in a row as far as, uh, the fire department getting their insurance, and even if they don't wanna burn it, they just wanna go in there and tear stuff up. And then step back and have an engine on scene, we did it once on College Street, if you remember, Roger, when we were younger.
Yeah.
Uh. Once they get through doing what they're gonna do, set it on fire, and we'll sit there and watch it till it burns, till there's nothing left, and then I made a minimal cost of maybe a roll-off dumpster, I pick it up as my front, Ronnie's front-end loader, and I now save the church a ton of money, give the, the fire department, uh, some good on-hand, uh, experience. And then I can move on with maybe the, the project that we're trying to do to support this church, so.
What did Don say about it now?
Uh, as of right now, he's still trying to get on the liability insurance lines for burning it and going in and putting it out. Now, as far as just going in and turning stuff up, uh, I don't know if that's gonna require that, uh, but to actually set it on fire and have the guys go in and put it out, and then come back out, and maybe set the kitchen on fire, go in and put it out, come back out, he's checking on the liability part. As far as doing a control burn, he didn't have a problem with it, other than we had to get it approved for the city to allow us to do it. So, and I think we might have to, T E C Q may have to give us permission, we might have to get a permit through them city, but Don's supposed to be checking all of that for it. Like I said, the first step is, is getting you, if we get all this stuff approved like is legal and are able to do it, the city can say, okay, you can do it. So that's kinda where we're at, you're the start of this ball rolling.
Okay.
Well, I make a motion that we allow the fire department to do this control burn with proper permits.
I have a motion by Mr. Richards, uh, to allow the control burn with proper permits.
I'll second.
I got a second by Mr. Farmer, all, all in favor? Okay, carries unanimous, uh, discussing considering necessary actions on the warrant officer position for the next fiscal year's budget, Mr. Farmer?
Yeah, um, so the chief and I, uh, we're talking, got some news earlier this week that, uh, Brad, Mr. Elliott's gonna be leaving us, uh, to take a constable position.
He can go.
So, he'd be. But, uh, we're gonna miss you, but, um, you know, we, we need to move forward with this position because I think it's, uh, something we're missing out in the city, uh, we're missing out on a lot of money with the warrants, I think we have over four hundred, or four million dollars in warrants. Is that, is that about right?
Yeah.
Two point four, okay, got the numbers a little wrong, all right, um, but right now, we, we have the, the position under security, under like the courts, like the security. What we're afraid of is if we put an officer in place right now, get him trained up, once he's trained up, the year's over, and that position goes away, we lose an officer, and we spend all this money training. So we wanna try to go ahead and secure that position, uh, for another year. Have one of our officers slide into that position, then it opens up another spot for another officer. Um, but we wanted to kinda go over it with council to kinda see what we can do, or any kind of suggestions that you guys may have.
Well, Sean, this, this is your department, what do you think?
Mm-hmm, that's, that's absolutely right, I mean, like you said, I don't wanna bring in, you know, Brad, Brad's gonna be leaving us probably at the end of February-ish, somewhere around there, um, or March, so. By the time that happens, we do, we do the testing, do the hiring, do the background, all that, get somebody trained, you're probably looking at the end of May, June, depending on who has experience. Um, so then you're only looking at July, August, September, you're looking about three months, you can actually, somebody actually working for that position, um, and it's, and then if the council decides, no, we're not, we're not gonna have the funds, or we don't wanna fund that. Then we basically hire somebody for three months' worth of work, and it's not, uh, it's not, it's not realistic, it's not feasible, to put that much money into training somebody in uniforms and all that stuff. So, mainly the reason we brought this is at least to bring this to you to see what your feelings are about the future of that position.
I think it's gonna be based on whether or not it pays for itself or not, and we're not gonna know that to the end of the fiscal year. Cause I think that was part of the deal, it didn't pay for itself, and we weren't gonna fund it next year.
Right.
And we can't, and we can't decide now that we're gonna carry it over to next year, now, we have to wait till, until that time comes around.
But if we have the funds this year to do it, most likely we would have the funds next year to do it, correct?
Not necessarily, because.
I mean, cause we're still getting the same.
Well, yeah, but the court securities funds only brings in, what, two dollars per, two dollars per citation? So, that, 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 that fund has been building for years and years and years at two dollars a pop, if you understand what I'm saying?
Yes, no, I do.
Yeah, so, I mean, that, that salary was gonna dip, pretty much, it was not gonna deflate it, but it, I mean, deflate it, but it was gonna, it was gonna knock a big chunk in it, but we had to make sure that the, what the warrant officer was doing, bringing in the funds. And the, and the warrant fees and all that other stuff were gonna equal out.
Right.
What the salary was, plus some. It doesn't do any good to, for, you know, if, if the salary was forty thousand dollars, and we only bring in forty-five thousand from the salary we brought in forty-five, we brought in, you know, we gained five. So it really's not, in my opinion, wouldn't be worth the position for five thousand dollars in the big, in the big scheme of things.
Sure.
Not to say that it wouldn't, I just don't know, do we have a idea yet of what impact it's had since October?
We've had to kind of hold off, well, we've, we've kinda switched the, the way we've done things, so we really haven't got our, everything smoothed out. It is now, but it's only been within the last, what, three weeks, two weeks?
About three weeks.
Um, to figure out a system that actually worked for us compared to the consti, or the JP's office, um, and then obviously with Manuel leaving, um.
Part of it is, is the actual monitoring, because whatever contact they make, you know, they'd put a little note on our, on the contact or on the warrant sheet itself, but then, we have to. Check that on a regular basis to see if that particular warrant has paid due to the contact being made, so it's, it's kind of, it's, we have to monitor it. To check, there's no way to, to just top it in the computer and let it pull up the numbers, because it's not gonna do that.
Well, and, 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 you know, you mentioned that to me today when we were discussing this earlier, um, and, and I was thinking about that, I don't think we really would have to monitor it, uh, like, you know, putting a tick mark or a check mark on it. Because at the end of the year, we're gonna see the money, and, and I don't, it's kinda hard for me to believe that it's, cause, I mean, it's two point four million, it hadn't been coming in, so now if you start getting. Warrants that are coming in all of a sudden, then of course it's gonna be because of the warrant officer, it's not because they just wanna pay their warrants.
In that we, we, we report to Omni, and depending on how things fall, it depends on how many of these, um, offenses have been, have been, are up for renewal on the driver's license, you know how long the driver's license lasts? And so, that's what's, right now, that's what we're seeing a lot of, is people are paying because they don't, they can't get their driver's licenses renewed. And, and so, there's been a lot of people paying because their driver's licenses won't get renewed, and they're, they're at their, the end of their time, you know, so they can't get them renewed. Yeah, they're gonna call, come in and pay, what we're doing is we've got a list of what warrants we done on a certain date, which ones, um, the warrant officer has, has done, we've, if it's been brought back, we've noted that. If it's been paid, we're putting the amount on there of how much was paid, so that we can keep up with it that direction as far as warrants go. As far as citations, that goes through the system, so we can easily pull up, you know, the number of citations that he's issued if he's out working, out on, um, thirty-five traffic control. But as far as the warrants themselves, knowing exactly what the amount is that comes in on that, we have to monitor it in that direction.
Another thing that we've, we've started doing is, obviously, the officers check their addresses, make those are correct, but now we've started getting phone numbers, which is also help, the warrant officer.
Right.
Get, be able to make contact with people that in the past, nobody got phone numbers, um.
And, and part of, part of the, um, the delay even right now is that we've never done the warrants, the officers haven't gone out and done the warrants in this manner. We've had the warrant roundup that has been successful, but we haven't actually had a warrant officer that goes out, so there's, there's glitches that we have to work through and, and see what's gonna be, what's gonna work for both, both us and them as far as, uh, working a warrant.
What was the, what was the cost, I mean, I can't remember the numbers, but what was the cost that was gonna be taken out this year to cover the warrant officer, and then what was left over?
I, I couldn't tell you, I don't know, I think it was around forty thousand for the warrant warrant officer, but.
Okay.
And what was gonna be left over, I, there's no way I could tell you.
Okay.
And there's no way to tell what's gonna be left over, because from day one, all through the year, there's still gonna be that two dollars coming in from other.
Well, right, but what, what, I guess what I'm getting at is, uh, let's say it was forty thousand, but if we have a hundred thousand in the bucket, it would cover us, we'd have enough to cover us.
No, I think it was less than sixty.
Okay, and that's, that's where I was.
It was, yeah, it was, it was gonna leave, I think, right around twenty in, in that actual account.
That seems, that seems.
Yeah, and again, I can't remember, so I just, I wanted to, you know, I think if we did that, but, uh, and Chief, what do you, I mean, here, here, here's my thing, we have some, we have great officers right now that are. They're doing some good things, I, I think we have a really good police department, um, the last thing I want is you to slide an officer over there. And then you hire someone, and then we lose that officer. That's the last thing I would want, I mean, that's kinda the quandary that we're in, yeah, I mean.
I mean, the only other thing that we could do, like I said, depending on budget-wise too, if we could, if the department could, has the need for an additional officer that, you know, that we could pay through, you know, through the general budget. But, you know, like I said, it just, we won't know up until this next, you know, August, September, where we're at on the funds and, you know, what, what's gonna happen.
So kinda do like a dual role, maybe, until Brad leaves, or after Brad leaves, or?
Well, I mean, I think that would just kinda depend on the, you know, the officer and what, you know, what kinda time that they would have, uh, you know, we, we've got an overtime budget for.
Well, that was gonna be my, I didn't mean to cut you off.
No, we've got an overtime budget for, say, our STEP program, uh, if he could, you know, possibly encompass some of that right now for somebody coming in and, uh, on their day off of.
Yeah.
You know, four to six hours a day, whatever, just to come in and, and attempt to serve warrants, I mean, it's, it's the same, same process.
Yeah, but our STEP is kinda low right now.
Well, that's what I was gonna ask, could we use what's left over in the security fund specifically for warrants? If somebody came in, if somebody came in on their off day, instead of working STEP, which is traffic, we're warrants, and pay that out of the, uh, the court security fund?
Cause it would still be the, it would still be the same job title, so what, whatever we have left over, um, once Brad leaves, we use the rest of that to, for like overtime or time and a half, like we're doing for STEP. And pay them out of that for doing strictly warrants.
If it was strictly warrant, we could do that because that's part of security, and that's what that, that, yes, that's what that's allowed for.
So, patrol.
Let me, let me, let me, let me ask you something, you know, other day when the auditor lady was down, and she was talking about STEP program, and how we were doing the STEP program, now, this gonna get back in the situation with the STEP program and. The way, cause she said, last time, said we, we, we couldn't do the STEP program like we were doing it.
Well, because we, last meeting, we changed it because we were doing, it's kinda like contract labor, we were paying for it as contract labor.
Right, and we didn't fall under, and it didn't, that particular title did not fall under contract labor, so we had to change that.
So we changed it to time and a half, so we're paying the officers time and a half.
Y'all did it the last minute, y'all did it Monday night, okay, I wasn't here, you know that, thank you.
Okay, so let's, let me clarify what your question was, because I'm, too many people talking, your question was, if Brad leaves, we can use the difference in those funds. To have an officer come in and work warrants in that capacity at time and a half.
Yeah, and, yeah, it'd be a time.
But it'd have to be because it, it would be, I mean.
Yeah.
That or.
So, yeah, that's exactly what I'm saying.
I think we'd follow through, just to make sure that it's capable of it, I don't see why that it isn't.
And that's just gonna be another line item that you get to manage, so...
I mean, and that way we could at least probably get us through the year and, and monitor.
And then maybe we reevaluate it then, and kinda see how it is, you know, like, you know, Ronnie said, so...
Yeah, actually, well...
And ultimately be cheaper on the, on the fund, just due to the fact that we're not having to pay the insurance and the...
There you go, the last person, the last insurance.
And all of that stuff out of it too, so it would ultimately save money by doing it as an overtime, but like I said, they'd have to be strictly doing and working warrants in court security, in that type item.
And that kinda helps our position with the STEP too, where when you're discussing, you know, hey, what are you guys gonna do with the STEP, so that does kinda help the officers out as well.
Do you want to entertain a, uh, motion not to fill the position, but to work, possibly just work it as an overtime position out of the court's security, which the present employer, employees?
Yeah, I'll just, yeah, I'll make a motion, um, that we use what's left over, it's time and a half, and work strictly warrants.
Okay, I've got a motion by Mr. Farmer, do I have a second? I got a second by Mr. Cochran, all in favor? It's unanimous, item number four, we're gonna go into closed session, the city, uh, Italy City Council reserves the right to adjourn to executive session as authorized by the Texas Government Code, section five five, one point oh seven four, to discuss the matter listed below, City Council also deserves the right to consult, in closed session with the city attorney, uh, on any opposed agenda, item pursuant to the Texas Government Code, section five five, one point oh seven one two, item number one in this closed session is to deliberate the appointment, employment evaluation, uh, resignation duties, discipline, or dismissal of the public works director being Carol in all matters incident and related thereto, Texas Government Code, section one point oh seven four. Word, John. Oh, I'm sorry. Uh, what is it? Six fifty-one.
Goodbye.
Okay, we're back in session, let's just say it's seven forty P.M.
I'll make a motion that...
I know, I got, I got some, I got some stuff to talk about here, hang on, I gotta read all this. Uh, item five, reconvene into open session, uh, item number one, discuss, consider necessary action, appointment, employment, evaluation, reassignment duties, discipline, dismissal of public works being Carol, all matters that are incident and related thereto, Texas Government Code, section five five, one point oh seven four. Now, you have the floor.
I'll make a motion that, uh, that we take no action on item one.
I got a motion by Mr. Cochran.
I'll second it.
I got a second, and we have discussion.
Yes, um, first, I wanna make a statement to the community, uh, and then I'm gonna make a statement to the department heads, so, after looking at everything and talking it over, here, here's the thing, I'm all about accountability and doing what's right, but also addressing what's wrong, and I, I believe tonight we've addressed what's wrong, but we take no action, Eric, we're about to vote on this no action, but all I wanna tell you guys, and this is probably the first time this has ever been done, explaining why I second the motion, and I think it's important for you guys to understand this, if they didn't know, e- even though it's common sense, in this day and age, we have to document everything, so if they have never gotten their hands slapped or anything prior to this night, or it's not been addressed by us, we can't terminate, or we can't write one, somebody up for it, um, so this is kinda where I'm at in the process on that. As for the department heads, from my standpoint, moving forward, if you spend money on lunch, Gatorade, coffee, creamer, water, lunches for your employees, gas for your personal truck, wha- whatever it may be miscellaneous use for, for personal use, I'm going to push for termination on the spot, that's my opinion, I'm gonna stand by it, I'm gonna stand by it for the citizens, if you are caught every month spending these items, we will have a call meeting, and you will be on the agenda for termination, is that understood from all department heads? Okay? That's all I have.
And I, I know this looked like, uh, it was an attack on Dean, and, and it, it wasn't, it was, uh, you know, um, Stephen, um, had enough time to be able to, to dig in and dive into, and we communicated about, um, uh, the, the water department and, and some of the things that we have done in the past, and we've done it even, even when you were on the, on the council, y'all did the same thing, they bought water for, and bought, so it, this is on all of us, okay? So, but from this point forward, we are, um, we've kinda, um, drew a line in the sand for the citizens to say, we're not gonna spend any more of your money on things that are for personal use, for personal use, cakes, flowers, any, any of that, so, um, this is part of the accountability, um, that, that we promised you, and if you see something that you find out there, um, please let us know, because, uh, um, you know, we're, we are, we're trying to be accountable for you guys, so that's all.
Good job, we appreciate that.
And we're gonna be looking every month, so, I mean, it's, we're not gonna let it slide by just yet.
But that doesn't mean that we won't stop drinking coffee and cream.
That's right.
So if you see us drinking coffee, we're biased.
Anybody, any more discussion? Okay, all in favor for no action? Unanimous? Okay, uh, councilmen, comments, Mr. Jackson? No comments? Oh, no, well, we're gonna, never mind, there's no comment, we're not allowed to speak today.
Anyway, anyway, I'm gonna, since y'all are asking, I'm, I think, you know, I'm gonna miss Brad, I appreciate everything you've done thus far, been a good employee, good friend.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, I'm illegally speaking, bro.
No, that's my fault, I should, I'm sure you've been on, uh, all right, I guess if that's it, then, uh, meetings adjourned.